Chair of Neighborhood Board Five Diamond Head Couple Hulu St. Louis Heights calling this meeting to order of May ninth, twenty twenty four. And Spencer, if you would be so kind just to do a roll call and let us know who is here and who's online.
Sure. Hello, everybody. I'm Spencer. Julia Allen.
Here.
David Beadle.
Here.
Michelle David. Dan Decker. Raffia Hasina.
Yeah.
Alex Khan.
Here.
Angie Knight. Michelle Mattson. Margaret Merchant.
Here.
Arlene Velasco.
Here.
Winston Welch.
Here.
Dylan White.
Here.
Bruce Wong. Linda. The one is here. Just making our way to Dave.
Okay.
Okay, so we do have Coram.
Thank you. And we do have a vacancy for Sub District Three. Is there anybody who's interested in filling this vacancy? I don't see anyone here in person or online. Is there somebody who's interested? Okay, seeing none, I will move on to our Honolulu Fire Department Waikiki Station. And we had an ongoing concern about the safety of wildfires as well. I don't know if you have any further updates on that, but you can see that our own Ms. Mattson was on the front page of the news today about this wildfires as well. So if our officers from Fire Department are here, please take it away. Okay, we have, we will come back to them if they come back a little later. Next, let's move on to our Officers of District Six Waikiki Kapulani Park Diamond Head.
Good evening, everyone. Lieutenant Blake Rita, nice to see everybody. This month, just going over the stats, we had five robberies, twenty-one burglaries, one hundred twenty-eight thefts, eighteen car break-ins, thirty-seven assaults, two sex crimes, ten bicycle skateboard citations, twenty speeding citations, one thousand seven hundred and seventeen parking citations, nine loud muffler prohibited noise citations, sixty-eight park closure citations, and six park closure arrests. We had a total of four thousand six hundred fifty-seven calls for service. Just going a little in-depth for the robbery cases we had, we had five, but in actuality we only had four because one was reported in Waikiki, but it actually occurred in the New Wano area. We were able to arrest two of the individuals in that because those cases that we had, they're reported immediately. The two other cases were, one was a purse snatching that occurred on Lourdes Street, but intoxicated right after the bar, but it was reported a couple hours later. So we couldn't find anybody for that one. And then the other one was by the Fort Durussee Hilton Hawaiian Village area, but that was reported over an hour later as well. In regards to burglaries, we did have a slight increase, but looking into the reports, a lot of it were commercial burglaries, so restaurants, kiosks. And the common theme that I noticed in those cases were unlocked doors or easy access entry points, like open or ajar windows, or just making it enticing for the suspect to go into. So that's another thing that I want to address in my safety tip is that when you, you know, just make sure you lock your doors and just don't make it enticing for the criminal to commit a crime. So if you're gonna leave, yeah, make sure you lock your doors, close your windows, because you don't want to make it seem like an easy target for the criminal to access your house, your restaurant, you know, your business. So that's my safety tip, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Officer Rita. Is there, are there questions from anyone here in person? Okay, and questions for the officer online? Daisy?
Here. I have a question. You notice the, there's riders using those electric bicycles or maybe regular bicycles? I've seen some do wheelies right by Hilton Hawaiian Village. Does the police officer have to observe it to do any kind of citation or what? Because it's like a few seconds and they're gone. So I don't know what recourse there might be.
So we do a lot, I mean, in Waikiki, we have a lot of these large bicycle rallies that we try to address. And to be honest, the bike factory business puts it on, and we've been in contact with the owner of the bike factory to try to minimize that or to try to have them get a permit. They haven't been exactly cooperative, so we're looking into other enforcement. You know, we warned him several times, and it might, you know, take a little bit more progressive action on that part, on our part, to address that with that business. But just on a regular basis, yeah, we do have some bicyclists that, you know, wheelie and it's more so a crime if they take their butt off the seat. And that's something that we can cite upon viewing. But again, it's hard for the officer in a vehicle to address this type of crime because, you know, we're weighing the type of violation versus, you know, the protecting life, you know, and property and chasing this individual for a monetary citation sometimes doesn't justify the risk. So it is a cat and mouse game that we do try to address, but we're trying to, like I said, we're trying to address it with a lot of the businesses to do education and, you know, warning their riders, but when we do see it, we do try to address it.
Okay, great. Because just to warn you, I don't know if you heard, but Bikini Hawaii plans to have more electric bicycle on their fleet in a couple years, so that might be more that you need to look into, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Officer Rita. I did have a question in general. I see these one-wheeled, they look like skateboards but with a motorized wheel on them, and sometimes people are going super fast even on like a Kapahulu or Alawai. How were, are those supposed to be in the street? Are they on the sidewalk?
Those things that we really have to work with our representatives and, you know, lawmakers on that, because there's a lot of loopholes with that, even like the electric scooters. It's a lot of loopholes that, there are some laws that we can try fit to address it, but sometimes it's, the verbiage is a little bit difficult and it's a little bit of a stretch to include certain things like those scooters or those one-wheel, you know, whatever they're called, yeah, those one-wheeled skateboards almost like. So it kind of depends on the situation, but it's something that we're trying to address with our lawmakers to kind of fit those, to make bills, to make new laws, new ordinances to address that specifically and name those types of devices in the actual law.
Okay, thank you. Maybe a question for our City Council members. Margaret?
While we're on the subject on mopeds, I understand that it's illegal to have two passengers on a moped, maybe not a Vespa. That's an easy, that's low-hanging fruit, just like the safety stickers. Are you guys, I mean, we see them all the time and they're, it's scary, you know, sometimes they have little kids on them and all of that. Is there any, you know, plan to start citing them or at least let the university know maybe?
Yeah, like I agree, a lot of it is college students, right? So it's something that, yeah, we would probably like to work with. I mean, it's not our district, UH isn't our district, but we do, when we do see it, like you said, it is an easy citation and it is harder to run away when you have two people on the moped versus some of these more dangerous riders. So it's, it's a lot easier for the officers to cite. So when we do see it, we do try to address it, and I agree with you that it is our college stu, our younger people that kind of do it, because we really don't see too much of the older generation riding tandem on a moped. It's mostly like college students.
It's gotta be distracting to have two people on a bicycle built for one.
Agreed, agreed. Harder to maneuver and everything like that. It's not built for that.
Thank you. And Linda?
Thank you. I was, got a complaint about chickens on Kana Oa Street. The people, I think it's thirty-six oh six or thirty-six hundred block, they feed the chickens regularly and there's a swarm of them out there and they've been asked by the neighbors to not do it. And they said, well, they like the chickens, they're gonna do it anyway. And they told them it's illegal. So I'm wondering what, if you might visit the house or?
Where is that located? Sorry, it kind of froze up a little bit. What was the location of that?
What street?
The what? Excuse me?
You enforce vigilante chicken, chickens.
No, but what street is it?
Who's talking? Yeah, just a minute, Margaret. So can you visit the house? It's a, they keep feeding the chickens, so they have swarms of chickens over there and other people don't like it, but this one house keeps feeding them and they know that it's illegal. It's like an ongoing event in the neighborhood. So I got a complaint about that. So I'm wondering if maybe someone could visit the house and tell them that it is illegal?
Um, yeah, maybe Lieutenant Thompson can answer that.
Yeah, Kana Oa Street is in my district. I think you gave the address of thirty-six oh six?
It's that house, the next house, it's the blue house, I believe. No, it's not the blue house, it's next to the blue house from the corner on Campbell, I believe. You know the big church that's there on the corner?
Right.
It's not the house across, but the next house.
Across going toward Waikiki or going out toward KCC?
Towards the beach south. There's a Korean house on the corner, and then there's the next, it's a small house.
Okay, well, we'll look into that now.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. So would they. Mahalo.
Are there any other questions online? None, then we will, thank you, Officer Rita, move on to District Seven Diamond Head Couple Hulu St. Louis Heights East Honolulu.
Hi, good evening. Twenty-five weekends, total calls for the service for the month was six thousand two hundred eighty-four. I'll see it front, I know it's been around with a, they're getting the warrant scam, and this past month was, they're getting calls representing HPD, telling people that they have warrants. Just so you know, the law enforcement scam, they will never, they'll never collect over the phone. Let the elders know because they seem to be targeting the elders. Let them know that they're not saying money over, so they didn't for any reason. Get a number or call, call HPD or whatever authority is sending, how that works to verify that the call is legitimate. There's more tips and stuff that can be filed on HonoluluPD.org regarding scams. Do you have any questions? If you have questions?
Any questions here in the audience? And online? Thank you very much, Officer Thompson. And are the, is there anyone from the Fire Department who has come back? Okay, seeing none, thank you, officers, for coming and the good work you do every day in our community. The approval of the draft meeting minutes, you know, I want to delay this down to board business later, so I'm gonna move that down. One concern that I have, if we don't get to it is, and this is, you know, the neighborhood assistants have been instructed to do meeting minutes where there might be a presentation, but there's, the issues don't come up of, you know, who said what, where, when, and why, sort of like in the presentations, it just says, there's a notation in the meetings that says, you know, one hour and forty-five minutes in, for example. Well, there were eighteen minutes that elapsed before then, but we don't know what, what those concerns were, so I think it's valid that the public has a summary that Mary Smith asked about this, John Doe asked about that. In the meantime, you know, we're gonna, not gonna solve it tonight, but I would like to defer those till later.
Sure, Welch. I, I offer the order of the day to take the minutes now.
Spencer, is it in my power to defer them later? Okay, is there anybody who would?
I was gonna say, yeah, if there's an objection to it, which there is, then it should go to motion.
Okay, is there a motion? Would I, I'll entertain a motion to defer these meeting minutes till later on under board business.
Chair?
Yeah.
I, I move that we defer these minutes until later on under board business.
Is there a second?
I agree with you, by the way.
Yeah.
Arlene, seconds. Do we need a vote on this, Spencer?
Okay, I think, I think our discussion, I think Board Member Boidle, yeah, we can go into a discussion so he can have his.
Okay, discussion? Yeah, Arlene did. Mr. Secretary Boidle?
Thank you, Chair Welch. Yeah, I would like to take the minutes now. I don't see any point in deferring until later in the meeting. Thank you.
Are there points of discussion?
I have discussion.
Go ahead.
I too would like to know what the concerns were instead of just listing there were concerns. I mean, why do we look at the minutes to find things out? And I don't want to be referred to have to go look up the video and go to some time spot. Concerns should be in the minutes because that's what we're here about, not just to give a blanket, there were concerns about this issue. So I heavily don't want that to continue. Thank you.
Any other, anyone else online who has some point? I don't see any, Spencer, can you do the, like, Michelle? Go ahead.
Aloha, Chair Winston. I fully agree with you and Linda. This has to be remedied. Our constituents are completely in the dark about the various concerns that are brought up, and it's a public disservice, the way things are happening at the Neighborhood Commission Office with things being ordered without boards voting on what is happening to them. Thank you.
Anyone else online there? Yes, and I mean, just as a, for the public who may not be understanding this or think that it's a little bit needy, if we're having like police reports, we need to know what questions were brought up. And now chickens arguably, probably not as germane as like burglary, however, it's a concern that's, that's meaningful for folks. And the same for, if we have a presentation about like the Alawai flood control project, this has been going on for about a decade, and it also spans seven neighborhood boards. So if someone is interested in actually following this issue through the years, and it just says community concerns, there's no way for us to meaningful track that unless we go directly to that area and then have to listen to the video. And if you remember, the public slogging through all that, whereas it could simply be, you know, just a very quick reference, you know, Mary Smith asked about Alawai flood control project to, you know, whatever it was. And so it's just not a service to the public by not having clearer, more comprehensive meeting minutes. Go ahead, Dylan.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, and this really isn't in regard to the minutes, but just really briefly, at this point, we've been now talking about whether or not we should debate the minutes for about five minutes, and it's like, at that point, we probably could have already had the discussion. So, you know, I think it's just a, maybe a reminder to everyone that this stuff doesn't have to be as long as it needs to be.
Okay, so I guess we should vote if we can defer the meeting minutes a little bit later, but that was the point of the discussion, I think, is that this is a, you know, everybody gets to say what year she or they want to say on that. And so I think at this point, everybody has had a chance to speak. And Spencer, can you follow a roll to see if we should defer these approved meeting till later?
Sure. Julia Allen?
No.
David Beadle?
That's Boidle, no.
Sorry. Dan Decker?
No.
Michelle David? Raffia Hasina?
No.
Alex Khan?
No.
Angie Knight? Michelle Mattson? Margaret Merchant?
Yes.
Arlene Velasco?
No.
Dylan White? Abstain?
This is Arlene. I meant to say yes, I'm so sorry.
Yes means you want to delay the meeting minutes till later on. So Arlene is yes, and Linda is a yes. Is there anybody else who did not understand that?
Chair Winston?
Emma, yes.
Okay, so the motion fails, five in favor, five opposed, and one abstained.
Okay, so then, okay, so we have approval of draft meeting minutes from March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve these meeting minutes?
I so moved, Chair.
Secretary Boidle, and a second?
I'll second it.
Julia, seconds. Any discussion?
I have a discussion.
Go ahead.
I feel really strongly about this. We've always been able to read the minutes and have a synopsis of what happened. There were no referrals or no having to look things up in the video, and I think that's a miscarriage of justice to our, our constituents, and I feel very strongly about this. I've been on Neighborhood Board for thirty years. This has never happened until we have a new NCO secretary. So this is not serving our constituents if we don't. The minutes are supposed to show what happened, what it was like, and what it's like now. You know, it's not, it's not supposed to refer you somewhere. That's, you know, who's gonna look up things in this video? Maybe one or two people, you know, in our district.
Thank you. Other discussion? Secretary Boidle?
Thank you, Chair Welch. I first have a point of information. The motion, was it just for the March or also the April minutes?
You moved, you made the motion, so you tell us?
Well, I said so moved, but I didn't quite, all right, yeah, so my motion is the March and April minutes approval as written.
You mean at the same time?
Yes, unless, unless that was not what you said, and I had just missed.
I was just looking for singularly one.
Just mine. All right, so if you said just March, then fine. But, so to speak on the question, I, I think that the summary is good and that, that the recording is.
Excuse me, point of order? I don't think you can change what you said when there was a vote on it and go back and change.
You're just talking about why you want these minute meetings passed for March. Is that correct? Secretary Boidle?
Yes, that's what I was speaking on.
There's a motion for, they were supposed to be discussing.
We're in discussion, yeah. So I think he's right. Go ahead.
Yep, yeah, so I'm discussing the question. The motion is to approve the minutes for March as written, and my discussion is that I think they should be approved and that the way that they refer to the recorded, the recording is the best, it's the most accurate, detailed, fair, efficient way. And the, the video and the links in it and, I mean, the timestamps, it's, it's good, I think. So I urge to pass the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Boidle, and Ms. Mattson?
Thank you, Chair Winston. Obviously, people don't understand the statute regarding the minutes. HRS Chapter ninety-two, Section A is explicit about how the minute should be written, that the views must be reflected, the views expressed must be reflected, and the substance of the discussions. That is not just a simple presentation, ABC. It is what is involved in the meeting and how the public responds to it. Secondly, there is another HRS section, Chapter ninety-two, I believe it's three point seven, that refers to recordings. They may be posted until the written minutes are available and the written minutes take precedence. People have to understand the legality of this. If our board functions as a disservice to the public, then somebody could take our board to a ethics commission or another avenue to try to get the board to provide sufficient information that the public can understand.
Thank you. Are there other, others who wish to discuss this on the board, online, in person?
I don't think I talked this round.
You know, that was so long ago, I can't remember.
Well, what I want to say is we're not following upper trules of order, and we're not the state statutes. So, you know, what else do you want to do? How many people are gonna go look up by the timestamp in the video where the thing is so we wanted to discuss it? You know, that's exactly what the minutes are for, for information, well, at least the subject matter, so they'll have an idea if they want to go look it up in the video, if it's that important to them, at least what we discussed.
Thank you. Yes, and I will, a comment again here that, go ahead, Dylan.
Yeah, and I just wanted to clarify, just purely so we're not putting out like disinformation. The HRS ninety-two dash nine says the board shall keep written or recorded minutes, and if you're reading the section for written minutes, it says the date, time, and place of the meeting, the members of the board recorded as either present or absent, the substance of all matters proposed, discussed, or decided, and that's what Michelle's talking about. And that's basically it. And then any other information any member wants.
It also states the views of the participants, which is extremely important. Please.
Yeah, but then, yes, but then.
Michelle, let Dylan finish, please.
But then it clarifies further on in the current version of Sunshine Law, a written summary shall accompany any minutes that are posted in a digital or analog recording format, which references up above, written or recorded minutes. And it just says the date, time, and place, the members of the board recorded as present or absent, a record by individual members of motions made, and a timestamp or other reference indicating when the board began discussion of the item and when motions and votes were made. In that, you'll notice that it's missing the entire clause about discussion, views expressed, everything like that, because it's recorded, and so therefore it's taken that it doesn't need to be included in that if it's presented in a recorded manner.
That is an oversight, as, thank you for that. And go ahead, Michelle. There, Michelle, press your spacebar.
What is missing, of course, from that comment is the, this section, HRS ninety-two dash. this section, uh, HRS ninety-two dash three point seven, which I already explained, recorded minutes may be posted, and that, yes, there is a stipulation for uh, a brief summary with timestamps. However, in Section three point seven, it states that once the written minutes are available, uh, they must be posted. And, uh, they, they must, the written minutes are different from the brief, little sketchy summary you get with the recording and timestamps. I don't think we should belabor this, I think it really needs to go to the Attorney General, because this is beyond, uh, the Neighborhood Commission's capacity and the city's capacity at this point, uh, there is a violation here.
Okay, thank you, and I, I would tend to agree with that, I think from my perspective and any of those on this board know that I have held up the meeting minutes and, and been against them being approved because of this very thing. I wanted them off the docket, we can always go back in time and, and revise them, but I think the point being here, um, as I've been in touch with other neighborhood board chairs, they're facing the same issue, so at the end of the day, I think it's fair to ask ourselves, is this format serving the public to easily, quickly find information about salient points? And as some things happen, um, where maybe the city comes and talks about things for twenty-five, thirty minutes, and it doesn't say what was discussed in there, and it forces the public to go back, that's a disservice. I mean, I was the one that argued that we come on Olelo so that if there's more sunshine here. But that wasn't because I wanted proper meeting minutes to not appear, because written meeting minutes are so, I mean, a, a blip of the, of Olelo and it's gone. But what, what do we get, a solar flare, I don't know. But more important is that, how many hours would it take to actually go back when I can just scan meeting minutes very quickly and see what points were made in various neighborhood boards? So I find this, um, to be an important point that, uh, that needs to be addressed, like Michelle said, maybe at, at, at higher levels, because we are not unique in this. That said, I will, um, and, and because this discussion is probably exactly the same for the next month's meeting minutes, I think we cannot belabor the points if we have made them. But with that, I will call for the vote, which is to approve the March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes as presented by the Neighborhood Commission. Spencer, will you call it?
Julia Allen?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
I don't wanna say wrong again, I'm sorry, David.
Boedel? Aye.
Sorry, sorry, guys. Dan Decker?
Uh, I.
Michelle David? Rafa Hasina? Alex Khan?
Aye.
Angie Knight? Michelle Mattson?
No.
Margaret Murchy?
Abstain.
Arlene Velasco?
Um, no.
Dylan White?
Aye.
Bruce Wong? Linda Wong? Stain? Chair Winston Welch?
I vote no to approve these meeting minutes.
Okay, motion fails with five in favor, three opposed, and two abstentions.
So the meeting minutes did not pass and they will go forward. I will take a motion to approve the April eleventh, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes as presented by the Neighborhood Commission Office. Hearing done, then what do we do, Spencer, just move on to the next item on the agenda? Okay, then, um, and I hope that, that since we have a couple Neighborhood Commission, Neighborhood Board members here, that we can take that, those concerns back, um, I know they're not new, but they keep coming up again and again. With that, we have a Board of Water Supplies, perhaps, of, uh.
Hey, Winston, how are you, Chair?
Uh, I'm sorry, Kathleen, Kathleen, thank you, go ahead, Kathleen.
Not a problem, uh. Aloha, everybody, uh, my report tonight is we did have a twenty-inch main break on twenty-nine thirty-nine Harding Avenue on April fourth. Other than that, no other main breaks. And again, we're just urging people as we come into the hot, dry summer months to conserve water. And also, uh, we are working closely with the state on, uh, wildfire messaging and drought messaging, so we know it's very important, um, to cut back your foliage. But, you know, so it's that balance between using water and cutting back and being mindful of conservation, so it's a lot to remember. But we're asking everybody that, yes, we know we're coming into the dry season, but please don't start overwatering your, your laws. The best way to handle any concerns about wildfire is to make sure that all the brush and everything around your house is cut back. Uh, there's a lot of good information on the Hawaii Drought Council, uh, wildfire.org, uh, organization. And I urge you all to go online and download their booklet and take a look at that. Uh, really quickly, I sent, uh, pictures of several mockups of the camouflage paint for Diamond Head to Chair Welch and, uh, Board Member Mattson. And they agreed with Board of Water Supplies' choice on the way the camouflage paint would look. And then I sent, uh, I believe it was on Monday, a deck of images from different vantage points from Kaimakiki looking up Diamond Head, uh, to show them what it's going, because we've started the work on that, so I will continue keeping both of them in the loop and providing them with visual imagery. Once the painting is done, we will get started with the, uh, landscaping. And, um, I will keep everybody up to speed on that as well. I have no, nothing else to report, any questions?
Thank you, Kathleen, any questions from our audience members? Seeing none, uh, online, I see Ms. Mattson?
Aloha, Kathleen, I'd just like to commend you and Ernie and the entire Board of Water Supply for your diligence on, on this issue. I know, uh, you have many other things to think about, and it's not, uh, to do with the water supply, it's a, it's a protective security fence. And of course, Diamond Head is a registered national natural landmark and state historic monument. So this is why we must, uh, try our best to camouflage necessary infrastructure around the monument, and thank you so much for your understanding and all your hard work on this.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
And anyone else in, online?
Uh, yeah, uh, Board Member, uh, the water leak at the zoo was on the zoo's property, it was not, uh, related to Board of Water Supply. Thank you, uh, Board Member Murchy.
Uh, yes, thank you very much, Kathleen, always nice to see your smiling face.
Aloha, have a good evening.
And we have Capilani Community College at Dean Hoshko. If you are around, Carol. I do not see Carol here, so we will move on unless the fire department's come back yet. Then, okay, uh, we're up at Community Concerns and, um, we do have a number of candidates here that are going to be vying for Bert Kobayashi's seat, which he's vacating in the fall, as well as Scott Nishimoto's seat, uh, which he's vacating in the fall. And I propose that we hold a joint, um, candidate forum in June after our next meeting, uh, with uh, neighborhood boards that overlap the various districts there, so if there's anybody who would like to be involved with that, so that candidates can be given equal time, maybe Arlene can be a strict timekeeper when they gotta stop. Okay, so, uh, with that, though, there's other community concerns here, but we have a number of candidates here today. I will start and see if there's any general community concerns here that are not candidates, maybe, and we could start with that. It's the quiet month, okay, online, do we have community concerns that are not candidates that are here? Hey, well, I don't know, everybody's calm tonight, so I, oh, yes, ma'am, please, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, my name's Catherine Lee. Uh, I'm actually from the Waikiki, um, area, but I have a question that I've been raising several times in the Waikiki Neighborhood Board meetings that has to do with the fountain by the fire station. It's been dry for a long, long time, and I'm just wondering if anyone is also concerned about it and would like to see it flowing again, and if there's anything we as the citizens can do to move that along. I'll just keep bringing it up until maybe something happens with it. Once again, my name's Catherine Lee, thank you.
Thank you, Catherine, that's been dry for many, many years, as long as I can remember. Um, maybe Tommy's office might be able to help with that and get us some information. Oh, I see, Mr. Cruck, he's there as well, um, okay, and I invite candidates, come on up and, uh, introduce yourselves and why are you running, and then we'll, you know, if, if you all can decide amongst yourselves to, some good days for you after our next meeting, um, please let me know, thank you.
Aloha, my name is Pat McCain. I am running for Scott Nishimoto's seat. I got in a little bit late because I supported Scott, and I didn't know that he was gonna run. I had the privilege to work at the city-state legislative and executive branches, government. As Congress, the neighborhood branch's chief of state. As the president of the progressive system, did a bunch of things. I don't know. Waste of your time, spending of time, I appreciate the thinking of the time. Was heading in the car with Mayor Harris. I told him, don't forget new.
Can't hear.
Get five, you know, and on that one, get five when they make, uh, do that. Great rest, thank you, folks, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Um, Chair Welch, we could not hear anything, it was completely muted. I do not know what the candidate said, I'm very interested in, uh, who might be running for Scott's.
Maybe, okay, since they couldn't hear, maybe you can come back and yell into the microphone, of course.
I, I apologize. My name is Pat McCain, I'm running for Scott Nishimoto's seat. I worked at the city-state, federal legislative and executive branches. I believe in government, and I'm grateful for everything that everybody here is doing. Thank you very much, aloha.
Thank you, Mr. McCain.
Aloha, everyone, uh, my name is Ian Ross, I'm also a Democratic candidate for State House District Twenty-three, the seat being vacated by Representative Scott Nishimoto. After twenty-two years of, of diligent, incredible service to the state, uh, he's, of course, running for city councils, many have heard, he's leaving big shoes to fill. Uh, I have the honor of knowing many of you from the community, uh, from, from personal levels, from our neighborhood board system. I have the honor of being one of the, uh, four neighborhood board chairs who are chairs of boards that overlap with our district. And, um, this just means that I share many of the concerns that you folks have about our neighborhood board system, about government. And so when I say that I'd be a strong partner to this neighborhood board, I mean that truly strongly. Um, I see some shortcomings that occur when there's less than ideal follow-up and less than ideal listening, and I promise to listen and I promise to follow up. Uh, I have experience, uh, working at the legislature. Um, right now, I work at the Y and I Coast Conference of Health Centers, they're Public Affairs Director. Really passionate about public health, passionate about mental health services, services, uh, to the less fortunate communities. And if I have the honor of serving, um, I will, uh, really be focused on issues like housing, homelessness, uh, public health, and ensuring that, uh, we make sure that we're tied into our communities in terms of, uh, neighborhood security, issues like that. So thank you very much, Ian Ross, Democratic candidate for State House District Twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. And we'll get a chance to ask these candidates questions when we do our, our candidate forum.
Good evening, Board Members, my name is Kevin Long, um, I'm running for Rep Kobayashi's seat, uh, House District Twenty. Uh, I've seen a bunch of you before, and I've mentioned some things at the last meeting, but, um, I have been in government for a little over a decade, started working for Rep Scott Nishimoto back in twenty-twelve. Uh, was with him, uh, while he was the Higher Education Chair, the Vice Chair of Finance, the Chair of the Judiciary, and when he worked on Granite Aids and capital improvement projects. Uh, while I was there, I finished law school, and, and once I passed the bar, I started working in the mayor's office. I'm still there, it's been about five years, and my main focus there is state legislation that affects the city departments. Um, I'm hoping I can take that experience and do some good things for you guys, um. And I guess I just wanna let you know that I'm always available. My cell phone number is on my, my passport, so can you call anytime?
Thank you, Mr. Wong.
This guy calls the church, and he says, can I speak to the head pig at the trough? The secretary goes, oh my goodness, that's no way to talk about our pastor. The guy says, well, I'm thinking about donating five thousand dollars. Secretary says, hold on, Marky just walked in. My name is John Choi, I'm running for House District Twenty. I'm running, because we can't continue doing the same thing we've been doing. We can't let money run our gun. I'm all for building more homes and providing security for our neighborhood and taking care of Kapuna. My mom and dad live in Waikiki, they're eighty and eighty-five years old. But fundamentally, we need to have a paradigm change in politics in Hawaii. We had two great opportunities this last session. Government-funded elections and closing the loophole where a company can't donate, but all their friends and family can. In order to address homelessness, cost-of-living housing crisis, everything we wanna do, we have to get that money out of politics. That's the paramount issue that Hawaii is facing. We cannot afford to do things the way they've been done. We need change. I am change that we can believe in. I started out as a Deputy Attorney General, helping abused children. Moved on to be a civil trial lawyer, and I've been fighting corporations for my entire career, representing the people. We litigated against Ford, Purdue, even the state of Hawaii. They didn't do the things that they needed to do. This is all for the people, and I wanna take it to the next level, a much broader, and help more people. Case by case is good, but I'm ready to get to the legislature and continue the battle on behalf of the people. Thank you, my name is John Choi.
Thank you, Mr. Choi. Okay, so it's great, we have, um, interested people running for us, and there's others who are not here tonight, so again, we will look forward to a candidate forum uh, in the second half of June after our next meeting, uh, in conjunction with the other neighborhood boards, if they're willing. Okay, are there other community concerns that we have not seen or addressed? This is like the quietest month ever in a long time, but we do have, we are honored to have the mayor's representative. Mr. Boedel, you have a community concern?
Yes, Chair, thank you, I just wanted to read, uh, what Amanda Zepeda, uh, from Chair Water's office posted in the chat regarding the water feature by the fire station. She wrote that the DPR doesn't have any plans to fix the waterfall feature and reports that it will be maintained as a hardscape. Parts of, and maintenance of a water feature like that in this area have been too difficult to keep up with. And the response from DPR on, um, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, final response said, the Department of Parks and Recreation and Facility Maintenance inspected the water feature last year. It determined that the major work and capital funds would be needed to make the fountain operational again. The department has found that public fountains in such areas have experienced repeated failures due to being located and constructed in a manner not conducive to operating a fountain, therefore the water feature will remain as a hardscape at this medial traffic area. Thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Boedel, and Rafia?
Yes, I have a concern about, you know, several phone booth, uh, city and surrounding, uh, all the city, it seems not work. It seems not work and no longer actually it's not work and all looks broken. Is there maintenance or city has any plan to remove or repair of this kind of phone booth? All the public phone booth everywhere? So that's my just concern, nothing much, you know, I just need to know, it's not functional phone booth.
Thank you, Rafia. I think that's going to be for mayor's representative and Arlene also had a community concern.
Yes, I'm very concerned about what's happening at the Alawayi Harbor and all our other harbors of the state. I'm extremely concerned. I also am involved with water quality testing of our coastal waters. Last week, this Sunday, three days ago or how many days ago, the Alawayi canoe launch area tested a range of Enterococcus bacterial of 600. The considered dangerous is 130. So 130 versus 600 is what the people pulling their canoes out are facing in that water. With that, I want to segue into the dough bar is having the Board of Ocean and Recreation. They're having a vote tomorrow to replace the current location of a non-functional pump-out station, a non-functional fuel station for boats. They want to replace it with, with a parking lot for their police cars and dump, dump trash bins. And I'm very concerned. It's a prime location. It should be beautiful. It should have a pump-out station for 700 boats that are docked there right now. There's no pump-out station. That's why I think that water is testing so high. So it's a real, real concern. It's a health concern. It's an EPA violation concern. It's, it's, it's a real concern for the state. My concern.
Thank you, Arlene. And finally, I, leading into our mayor's representative, I just wanted to, Mr. Crook, if you can pass along to the mayor. But before that, I did, I've been in touch with Tommy Waters' office and Amanda can probably speak to this. And Alex are board members as well. If there's other who are interested in informing a sort of pilot walking committee to do walking audits of our neighborhood, primarily along the bus lines and then spreading out from there, just to have the very granular view of what needs to be done. And then working with the city with an overall plan to affect some, you know, it could be the sidewalk is uplifted or here's a puka for a tree or we need a different type of trash can. Or as Rafia was saying, this phone is burned out. Those sorts of things that we could just have addressed by the city, giving them all at one crack so that we don't have to parse it out. If you're interested in that, please let me know or let Alex know in the chat. Or also Tommy Waters' office, they agreed to join us with that. And we look for working with the mayor's office in that. And also I wanted to say that I did go, board members at other meetings, but the mayor's forum last month was quite good. I don't know if they're all done or not, but it was nice to have them all, all the department heads come out and be accessible to the public. So I appreciated that. And with that, Mr. Crook, if you want to give any report from the city, we welcome that.
Yes, thank you, Chair Welsh. I appreciate being part of this committee. In terms of your walking committee, you know, if you guys do that and it's a very effective method and you come up with a list and if you email it to me before your meeting, I'll try to research it everything and get back to you at your next meeting rather than wait for a month turnaround on those things. I'd be glad to do that. So thank you for that. In terms of my report, the mayor's newsletter has, has come out and you can, you can look that up online at the www.honolulu.gov mayor newsletter. This month, he has an update on improvements to Department of Planning and Permitting. They have three new software initiatives that they're doing. You might, you might be interested in that. The city's annual sustainability report was just published on Earth Day and that's highlighted there. The Haiku stairs removal is also highlighted in the newsletter. And then how to protect your families from fires during wildfire awareness month. Michelle Masson was quoted in the front page article today and later in my report, I'll report to the question that was asked at the last meeting regarding Diamond Head. And then summer fund is approaching and there's a really call out for, for people wanting to work there. If you have young students at home or, or young people that would like a job for a couple of months, the whole amount of people they can run through summer fund is, is really determined by how many people they can hire. Quite open for it. So anyway, also the mayor continues with his town halls. We've done seven out of 11. There's no town hall tonight, which is great. That's why I could be here with you personally. And it's worked out great for me. But as an FYI, on May 23rd at 6:30 is the, at Cocoa Head District Park is, is a town hall that's closest to you. And, you know, I've seen some of you at the different town halls. Arlene was at the last one and I was able to introduce her directly to Jean Albano, who's the director of DFM, so they could discuss the shower and such one-on-one. Hers, two engineers talking. They knew more than I did about it. So anyway, but May 23rd at Cocoa Head District Park. In terms of the questions that were, were asked last time and follow-up, there was a request by the chair about contained trash receptacle. And that it was, people were reaching into it and, and birds were getting into it and homeless individuals. This is by Leonard's Bakery. The, the really response to that is, is those receptacles are picked up daily and they don't put a lid on them because people do stuff with the lids. It's not good. So that's why there's not a lid on those. At least that's the report we get from DPR. The, there was a request, I think because an article came out about the Sharks Cove property up on the North Shore and whether or not that would be an ocean safety center. And, and at this particular time, so the, the mayor is very in strong support of a first responder center on the North Shore. The property at Sharks Cove is not owned by the city. A private developer owns the land. The mayor has met with him and asked if he'd be willing to sell the property. And he, and he said at this time he's not, which was interesting that the articles came out talking about him wanting to sell. But we, the city is looking at other viable options on the North Shore for first responders headquarters. It's so remote up there that it would really give us a lot of capabilities that we don't have today. There's a question Laura Ruby's asked that the mayor's budget will exclude funding for the proposed Alawayi Bridge. That, that funding, the construction funding for the capital improvement program, it's project 202, 01, 05, the Alawayi Bridge is included in the city's FY25 proposed capital program and budget. You know, the budget hasn't been finalized. We go next week to the CD2, but at this point in time, it is included in, in the budget. There's a question about intoxicating bleach odor on the city buses. And I think Daisy asked this question and wanted more information about it. So we consulted with Department of Transportation Services and the people they contract out. So there are three chemicals that they do use on the buses to keep it clean for all the riders. There's a peroxide multi-service cleaner that they use and disinfectant and that's used once weekly. There's a Zani One Step Quat detergent disinfectant and that's used to remove bodily fluids and solids that they find on the bus. And then there's a germicidal bleach, and that may have been what she was smelling, also used to remove bodily fluids and solids. Unfortunately, to have to smell it, that's not great, but you know, I, I think that, you know, we're trying our best to keep it clean from publics using public transportation. There's a question about the relocation of the Royal Hawaiian Ban. You know, I, I was part of the, of putting them there because the Waikiki Vista deployment of that property was Department of Community Services. And, you know, they, they have not had a home in a long history. They, they store their stuff in the back of the shell. They store their stuff on the back of the vans. And when we acquired that property, there's not only some good office space for them, but there's practice locate, facilities in it. So there's a large area where they can practice. And I'm actually quite proud that we were able to find a home for them. And we're working, there's be an entryway into their offices that we're going to display the history of the Royal Hawaiian Ban and all the richness. And in fact, they've reached out to me because I'm a director of Bishop Museum and we're hoping one of our curators there can help them stage that area. So, you know, it'll be a place when you, when you go visit, you know, have a reason to visit or, or don't. There'll be an area that would be very archival and, and, and history of the van. The next question was about the homeless encampment enforcements around Diamond Head. And I think it really, besides the ongoing issues there with, with the homeless, it was also the fire issues. And that was where, where Michelle was quoted today. You know, we did, and last time I told you, we had a planned joint state and city operation and we did that during the week of April 22nd through 26th. A lot was removed. I, I think it's valid. I mean, people cut down trees. They have a fire. That's a danger. I mean, I don't know else you do. I went up and inspected it yesterday and, and there are fewer encampments up there now. We still have some debris. It's dry right at this point in time. I will just tell you, it's not in my, my notes, but the point in time, Partners in Care does the point in time count on homeless? And they put out a press release today that on 5/15, May 15th, they'll be announcing their point in time count. Broken sprinkler heads at Kapilani Park. There are multiple sprinkler heads that were broken, especially near the aquarium. And this was interesting, on average, park maintenance staff replaces eight to 12 broken sprinkler heads at very locations throughout that park every month. So they'll continue to inspect, you know, like that committee, if you see something like that and you want to write me, I'll, I'll, I'll go right, right away and deliver that information to the department. So they're aware, so we don't have to wait for a month turnaround on this. I'm very happy to represent the neighborhood board in that way. That's really all I have in my report. I would remind you that I know I'm contacted because I'm part of the Emergency Operations Center for the Department of Emergency Management. We're under alert right now. We have meetings at eight tomorrow morning. So I just urge you, there's, there's potential for some strong storms this weekend and be safe, please. That's, that concludes my prepared remarks, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Crook. And I see if we have questions for the director here.
Anton, this is Arlene. I just have a quick comment about the sprinklers of the park. You know, I run around the park literally. And what I've noticed is the event on the big lawn mowers, they run them right over because I have picked up the plastic pieces of those heads. So maybe if they just put a little fence or something around there or weed whacked around there so that the, the big lawn mowers don't run them over.
Thank you.
There are questions for the director person online, Margaret?
Hi, I think those guys are out there so early in the morning with their mowers, big, huge mowers. They don't even see them at start. So just FYI. But also too, something that we talked about last year was that big ugly cement wall beside Unity Church. I walk around, run around the neighborhood a lot. It's still there. And you guys checked it out, Anton, and it was not illegally, without a permit. It's, the address is Diamondhead Circle. And it was owned by a local business person, I think, right next to the holocide of Unity Church on that side. And it's, it's so bad. It's so awful looking and it's just sort of an in-your-face and there's still even, it's, you know, it's right up to the sidewalk and it's a messy look. Anyway.
Okay, I'll, I'll go down there. I'll go down there and take photos and then.
You did that last year too. Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Margaret. And are there others online? Any questions? Ms. Daisy?
All right, thank you, Chair. Hi, Director. Thank you for getting the information about cleaning the buses. Do you know what the name of the company is? Do you know the name of the company? Because there's a concern, bus driver mentioned that they may be using chemicals that's not ocean safe. So I mean, there's concerns. Do you have the name of the company that uses it? I'm sorry.
Yes, it's Oahu Transit Services Incorporated.
Thank you, Mr. Crook. I, I was wondering if, I noticed that, that trash seems to be piled up for removal on Kapahulu near to, there's a, I guess it's a pumping station right in the middle of the block. Near the Reynolds Recycling, I guess it's across from the Episcopalion Church. How often does that come and would it be possible to have though that trash removal come more often? Because it seems to be that's a, an area as well as down in front of the, the depth line library here at the entrance to the Alawayi, just sort of this general Kapahulu corridor, but especially those two places seem to be hotspots with a lot of folks dumping trash out. I think, I think it's probably directly related to the Reynolds Recycling. They don't provide a trash bin there, so people will haul up trash and then dump it in the park nearby and then leave that for Department of Facilities and Maintenance or Parks to pick up. But it's possible to get more frequent pickup of that or cleanup of that area. That might help.
Yeah, I think we'll have to get creative. Our schedules are pretty stressed. They get, you know, the trucks are down and the maintenance, so you get a lot of that kind of feedback. So I think we ought to look at that and see if, if more frequent visits can happen or if we can come up with another way. But I'll, I'll be glad to address that. Yeah.
Thank you very much. And Linda has a question.
When we started the community parking lot there in that area, Side Street Inn solved a lot of things for us and they worked in unison with the parking lot. So you might give a call to Side Street Inn. They, they, they helped us a lot when we put that parking lot in for the business community. Bless your heart and that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Crook. And hope you have a good rest, safe weekend. Hope that it's not eventful for you.
We hope so, but be safe, please, by all means. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation on a BIKI update by Todd Boulangé. Am I pronouncing that correctly, Todd? Boulangé?
Yeah, pretty good, pretty good, Chair Welsh.
How do you, can you hear me? Give it, give it to us for the record so we get it right next time.
Boulangé.
Boulangé, okay. Then you have an update on BIKI for us, so thank you very much and go ahead.
Yes, did the NCO officer upload the sheet I sent him? If not, I'll just talk.
I don't know. Yeah, go ahead and I think you can share your screen.
Okay, well, I'll just talk. So no, this is, there are no station changes planned for the next quarter in your area. Not, no progress regarding any stations at KCC or Diamond Head. The three highest used stations in your district would be Station 520 at, next to Bogart's Cafe. The second most used station is 505, which is near Snorkel Bob shop. And then the third highest used station is the Safeway Station. So all three of these stations in the last four months have generated about 18,000 trips. And your neighborhood compared to the other neighborhoods in our, in our service area is tied for fourth in the most usage. So you're tied with Chinatown and just, just behind Makali Moiliili. 62% of our rides were taken by Kama Ainas and locals last year. And that was almost 800,000 trips for the year in our service area. And we are, the, the current news with BIKI is we are updating our, our fares and plans. We're making our first increase for Kama Ainas. We have, we had not increased the monthly fares for the commuter or the Voyager plans for Kama Ainas in seven years. So just like any business, inflation is also hitting us. Let's see. That's pretty much it, other than in our most recent survey, 17% of our members, after they joined BIKI, sold or got rid of a car in their household. So we're doing what we can to kind of free up curb space for those that can't bike and need to drive their cars. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Are there questions, Todd? Linda?
Yes, Todd, if you wouldn't mind, is there a place where we can access your report? And also.
Yes, I submitted it to the. Yes, I submitted it to your neighborhood board packet.
Oh, I don't think I got it. I can get one.
Are you able to drop it in the chat by chance?
Yeah, I'll do that.
So we'll get it to Linda.
Okay, thank you. Also, I'd like to know if your proceeds. Todd, I'd like to know if your proceeds are still going to the place in Hong Kong where they, or Singapore, where they made, you have to pay for the bikes. So how is it going?
So all the, okay, I'll answer your question. They, the bikes have just been paid off, but now we're looking to buy some new bikes. We've had about 400 bikes damaged during COVID or stolen. So all the fares are still going to maintain the system. There's not been a profit. So you don't have to worry about the money going outside of Hawaii, except when we buy bicycles and replacement of the equipment. The equipment is now seven years old.
So the new, whatever you got to buy will be bought, not in Singapore? So have you paid off Singapore?
The original bank loans have been paid off.
And the equipment?
Well, the existing equipment. But we're down about over 300 bikes and we're, we just ordered 288 bikes last month to bring the fleet back up into.
Are you free and clear of the Singapore business?
No, they're, well, it's a local registered business. They are, they're local here. All the employees are here. The original, the original bank loan came from Singapore.
Yes.
But all the service, all the call center people, the mechanics and the management are here in Kakaako.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you're free and clear of Singapore. I don't want to go on anymore.
Okay.
That was my question.
Thank you. And Daisy?
Okay.
Thank you, Chair. You did a presentation at the McCully Moiliili Board last week regarding that BIKI is planning to purchase electric bicycles for maybe next year or the year after. As you heard from the fire department, a lot of fires that happened with the.
I can speak to that.
I guess, yeah. How are we going to manage that? And also, how are you going to address those people that use the bicycles recklessly? And don't forget, anyone can use a bicycle, even people under 16. So I don't know how you're going to regulate that, but it would help. Thank you.
Yeah, no, those are very good questions. We're talking to our state partners about some grant funding for e-bikes and that would take about two years. The bicycles are charged. But also, if you follow the lithium battery problem regarding the fires, it's an important issue. But those fires are being created by businesses that repair batteries. They're not using UL certified parts. So if you Google that in New York City, that's generally the problem, not. Our bicycles are made in Canada. So, you know, they're top of the line commercial vehicles. They're not the $500 e-bikes you get at the big box stores or on the corner. But the fire issue is an important issue. That's why you have to have good mechanics, good maintenance and good parts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Margaret?
Yeah, there was a big article in Civil Beat yesterday. I guess you're looking for other, you know, grants or things from, you know, taxpayer grants and maybe private companies, but haven't really been super successful with that, from what I understand. And one.
Yeah, it's a tough, it's a tough market, you know. Maui.
Right.
Little high of.
Well, everybody blends everything on Maui, but they also, there was a note that the 501(c)(1) paperwork was not filed properly.
Really? I hadn't, I didn't, I haven't seen that.
Yeah, and it was because you have to, they had your salary, but you didn't have former executives pay listed. I guess you have to do that. Anyway, the paperwork wasn't done properly and.
I'll look into that.
Yeah, but if you just read the article, but also read the comments. And it was kind of interesting, probably about 70%, or 50% of the people supporting you. But it was interesting. But nobody, you know, I mean, you've got the free rent there on city property. You got the million dollars. And what, it was the $460,000 operating cost. What's that for?
Well, that goes to marketing. It goes to support the website, the app, station permitting, employee salaries.
Yeah, it did say that you were worried because your ridership was way down.
It's tough.
Yeah, no, 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 I get it, but I'm just thinking how realistic. You know, maybe we should come up with some better ideas. And there should be some company that I know you said that, or they said that New York had City Bike City Bank sponsoring it.
And we've tried, we've tried to get them.
But you do have some at local ads. Didn't you have a White Pacific Health that on there?
Yes, but they're our last sponsor. American Savings left before the pandemic, so it's really tough. I mean, I try to track sponsors where I can. But the better, better sustainable.
I'm sorry. I also, they also noted that the bikes, a lot of the homeless stealing the bikes. And when the city or whomever clears out the dump, they're all dumped in there and they just send them to the dump too. So is there any GPS stuff or anything where you could track things? And there was actually a bike chopping business going on right by, in our neighborhood.
Yes, but bike, that means our bikes have security fittings, so. And the wheels are different size than most bikes, so our parts aren't generally stolen. But you're right, the bike chop shops, the other bicycle parts are like currency on the market. But generally, if, generally, if our BIKI bikes are found outside of a dock, we'll get a call from the waste or the opal guys or the pier, they'll call us. So generally, we get them back.
Well, that's good, yeah, because that, you know, I remember saying that as well, so.
Yeah, and feel free to.
By our place.
Yeah, anytime reacting to a comment in the chat, anytime you see a lost BIKI, do call our 800 number and I'll put that in the chat and we'll try to get it. But, you know, to be honest, it's like the city bus. And any, any citizen can ride a BIKI, ride the bus, you know, even if they're homeless. So, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. And Todd, I just had a question. I don't know, UH, do you offer something where students can be, or part of their fee that they pay, they get unlimited access to the BIKI bikes? And the same for something with HTA or Waikiki Business Improvement Association, where they might do a grant to give you some dough in exchange for tourists riding them?
We're definitely, those are good questions. We've been trying to, we've been trying to get the support of the state university system to add us to their student and staff U-Pass plan, University Pass Plan. But we haven't been able to get through the paperwork, so, but it's a good idea. We hope it happens in the future.
Good. It seems like that's would be a natural, and then maybe something with HTA or one of the tour companies that would be interested or.
I'll talk to, I'll talk to Rick Egan and see what he thinks.
Yeah, well, yeah, it's a great program and we understand, yeah, it's been tough. After COVID, you lost a lot of ridership and the Japanese market hasn't come back and that sort of thing. But you'll, you'll come out of this with some really good ideas. And if members of the public want to contact you, what's the best way to get ahold of you?
I'll put the number in the chat.
Okay, very good. Well, we appreciate you coming tonight and giving us an update on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you again, Chair.
Okay, and we are at record time, so going to get out of here reasonably early, I think. With that, let's go to the elected federal officials' report. We probably don't have anybody from Ed Cases' office, Mazie Hirono's office or Brian Schott's office, if you're pals with them, please let them know. We welcome their reports sometime. We used to have them. Let's move on to the Governor's representative. Anybody here for Governor Josh Green? And I see Bruce Wong is here now as well. Anybody from the Governor's office? They're probably preparing for the storm too. And let's move on then to Les Yara. Is anybody from Senator Yara's district?
I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Yara, Senator Yara, please go ahead.
As you know and read about, the legislature is adjourned, sign and die, which is we don't come back until next year unless there's a special session, which is unlikely during election years. The Senate will be, plans to come back in late June to confirm or not for court judges. And that's the only one we have planned so far. There is a deadline for the Governor to publish a list of bills that he might veto of the hundreds that we sent him. And that is June 24th, Monday, June 24th. The Governor has about 40 something days, 45 days to review the bills and decide whether to veto them or not. And then the legislature on its own, without call, can just show up, although it's rare, for a possible veto override session on July 9th. And so those are the other two dates. I could mention a couple of bills that might be of interest to you. Besides the regular ones you've heard about, a new one which finally passed this year, which is a Silver Alert program, like the Amber Alert, where you have seniors who have dementia or get lost. And there's, the Department of Corrections Rehabilitation will put together the criteria that would trigger a Silver Alert now. So if someone calls 911 or a law enforcement agency and they report someone who has a history of some kind of getting lost or dementia or some kind of medical situation. And then that law enforcement agency works with the State Department. And once they agree that it fulfills a criteria, then they will send out an Amber Alert on these, or this Silver Alert to, that goes to anyone who signed up to inform people of, look out for this person in a certain area. It may not have to be statewide, but in certain areas you can geographically send out text messages. So that's one. Another would be, there is, for a two-year period, childhood sexual abusers who have caused abuse for the last 12 years, during a window of 12 years. The statute of limitations have passed. And so there is a two-year window, starting from July 1st. For any adult who had abused a child, sexual abuse, for a two-year period can be sued, which they cannot be sued now. That includes someone who is at a maximum of 26 years old. So there's 12 years after reaching the age of majority. And the other is after discovery, someone under 50 years old. If they had to have five years and they have to file a lawsuit by the age 50. So they would have to discover it through some, and there's, you know, professionals who can trigger that. Anyway, there's that. There's another one that's related, which is for adults who cause sexual abuse to others. There would be, there is a new law which says that someone can sue an entity that should be protecting the victim, whether it's a school or a church or organization, if they knew about it. They would be subject to a lawsuit to recover damages for not protecting the victim. So that is, I consider that quite, quite major. So that passive users are now here on notice. Then I can answer any questions. My role this year has been mostly in, in, in working in leadership between the House and Senate leaders to foster a climate of problem solving and less brinkmanship. And I think, for the most part, we've accomplished that more than in the past. So that the outcome this year is considered more than the past, more of a good for the community and less kind of, not as many shenanigans as some media would call it. And so this is considered probably one of the more successful sessions in recent history. So I'd be open to any questions at this point.
Thank you, Senator Yara. Are there questions for the Senator in person, Linda?
Yes, thank you very much for coming in and reporting to us. I was looking at how many got in replace measures passed or were introduced this year, actually passed.
There are several of them that, none of them passed, so that's the good news. There was a water commission bill that would have been a very good bill because our water commission is chaired by a governmental entity, a governmental appointee and not an independent commission, so we need that. But that was put in another bill that had a different subject and I knew it would probably not pass. There was another bill that was about to pass and wisdom prevailed. Sometimes it happens, where you had a bill that would allow outdoor advertising at the convention center. Having the convention center have naming, sell naming rights. And that was in a bill that would, there was another part of the bill that, no, actually that was gotten replaced and, and that did not pass. So we don't have any, so, so the reason prevailed and not having a lawsuit and having a gun replace bill. And I'd be interested in hearing any, any bills that anyone think is a gun replace. The key is that they have three full readings in each body before going up to the Governor's office.
Thank you. And Margaret?
I just want to thank you for supporting us on our behalf for Senate Bill 3202 that evidently passed, but the Governor has not signed it. Is that right?
Correct.
It's kind of interesting that they're talking about fire safety and has a bill that's not going to make housing more affordable, but it will make it denser. And will definitely, you know, be issues with quality, you know, control, quality control as far as construction and things like that, parking. And it's going to really affect, it's just kind of a blanket bill, right?
Yes, it is a housing strategy, which I disagree with, and none of us also disagreed. It's a legitimate strategy, but it's, it's too, it could have more unintended consequences than we'd want to think about. And there were four who voted with reservations.
I hate that.
Yeah. And so what that would mean would be that if the Governor, well, so in this case, so sometimes it's useful. And here's one of the few times it might be useful to go with reservations on a final vote. Because I've done this before. So if you want to signal to the Governor to veto the bill, and you'll win, because if the four say, we're not, we're, Governor, we had serious concerns, but we let it pass. But if the four were to say, if you veto it, we're sticking with you, then he would have, he would be emboldened to, you know, that he could have his reasoning prevail. Although I believe it's kind of unlikely to expect a veto in this case.
Thank you. And Daisy?
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Senator, thank you again. And other legislators that also voted on the same bill that Margaret. Hi, Senator. Thank you again. And other legislators said also voted on the same bill that Margaret just mentioned. It makes no sense. They never talked about the infrastructure. They don't forget Hawaii is not like Singapore as Senator Chang thinks we are. Because we don't ride bicycles as much as they do. We depend on cars. So good luck trying to find parking. As you know, in your own district, there's about five different huge projects that's going to be built. And I don't know where people are going to park their cars because your area is congested as is right now. So thank you and others for seeing the light and voting no on this particular bill because there are a lot of things that were not considered, like how are we going to get extra water use, water? How are we going to get electricity? How are we going to take care of the sewer problems? As far as I know, Kapafuli Avenue was the last big sewer upgrade fifty years ago. So I hate to think of more people and density and what's going to happen to all these things. Because something is going to break. As you know, there's a lot of things are breaking now. Thank you.
Thank you, Daisy. Yes, and yeah, and this this as a reminder, this board did pass a resolution opposing Bill thirty two oh two. So I think there's a lot that sounded like in the legislature, this was probably the hot topic that you had of many, at least in my circle that's coming up and people, well, anyway, it looks like it'll be revisited and just from Tommy Waters' comments and others when they had the special counsel meeting, I think the happiest people in this will be lawyers litigating everything left, right and center for years if it does go through. But Noella, you have a question or comment for Mr. Yehara?
Yes, good evening, everybody. Mr. Yehara, I liked the part in the beginning when you were talking about the kapuna out there. Because you know, an interesting thing I'm noticing at my age and I'm considered kapuna. But I'm younger than a lot of the ones that I'm seeing out there now and they're all really cool. But the thing is, is that they need help. And I was at the Good Laundry Matt in Kapahulu and there was a man there, very well dressed. But he was having trouble doing the whole thing in there. You got to use a card. Lot of that. But long story short, you know, I just was watching him because I go there all the time. And I helped him get his, figure out the system because it's not cash. And it was an enlightening moment for me for one reason that I see this in Safeway. They're usually in their eighties or nineties. And they're a little, you know, many of them are very old. They drive. We just had an accident on Diamond Head Road with a ninety-year-old woman driving a car that fell asleep and hit a telephone pole. Thank goodness, nothing bad happened. But Mr. Yehara, your comment about we got to be on the lookout, that's a big issue. So with that said, in closing, I would ask that perhaps that the Kapahulu neighborhood is very close, tight knit. And maybe we can put, some artists can be hired to put signs, watch out for your kapuna because we are younger and we see these things. I think we've all helped someone in the supermarket at one point or another or assisted someone. We've all done it, you know. So that's, thank you for your comments about the kapuna. Because I encountered it just the other day, you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Noella.
Can I just mention something? I'd like to sort of promote the idea, Noella, about like Safeway or other groups to say we are, this is a kapuna zone. Kapuna are treated special in our establishment. So that when people go there, they can, they know that people are, have an eye out for them and care for them and and assist in whatever way that they would like to be assisted.
Thank you, Mr. Yehara. No, she just, anybody else online?
I have something.
Go ahead.
I have something. Yeah, Mr. Yehara, you know, now that thirty two oh two has been passed, what can be done about it in the future to fight against it? Because this is, this is not good for our neighborhoods. We inundated with excess development in our, in our. You know, we live in neighborhoods. I live in a neighborhood that's, most of the people are, you know, longtime residents. And so I I'm living on a property that my grandfather owned back in the early nineteen hundreds. And so I don't want our neighborhood to look like Makiki. I keep talking about this, but then nothing, nothing takes place, nothing happens. Things just keep coming up that pushes us further towards making Kapahulu Kamaki look like Makiki. We have homes and five-story walk-ups and twenty-story condos. And I don't want Kamaki looking like that. So what can be done about this Senate Bill thirty two oh two?
Great. Good question. I've been meeting with what do you call it, community leaders, community activists, people who have stood up over the last multiple decades for the community. Government agencies are not really, well, my, so the thirty two thirty thirty two oh two represents what I'll call top-down. I like values-based development. This one is almost like one, one size fits all. And if you get on the wrong side, then too bad. And so one of the things that I'm I'm beginning to, I actually have a meeting next week, several of them. Basically, to put together a study group so that, so where the action goes at some point would be to monitor it, to understand the details of it and how mechanically works out. And so it really takes learning the content. And so at my, at some point, I'll, I will reach out to the neighborhood boards in Winston and and others to maybe do a workshop or some kind of a workshop to understand just the facts. I mean, we have a lot of opinions and opinions are good. It's it's helpful to get the facts first. I know it's hard to hold back sometimes, but once we can understand the facts of what the bill does and and so forth. So I can give you two examples. The proponents are saying that the counties will not get hurt at all. Because they, because the counties will, they cannot, they cannot issue a a building permit for a unit that does not have infrastructure. So the proponents are saying, well, infrastructure is a, is the 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 limiting factor. So if the county does not have infrastructure, it cannot issue a permit. In fact, it gets sued if you issue a permit and, you know, and no sewer or some, you know, you don't have access to, you know, what the permit guarantees you'll get. So so there's that. Now, it does cause areas where there have been infrastructure upgrades like sewer and water. But they will have high pressure. We should identify those areas because those those areas will be pressured to to open up construction. And then where there are areas where there is the capacity is full up. You know, we've had Ohana zoning since nineteen eighty eight six, something like that. When Eileen Anderson became mayor in nineteen eighty, nineteen eighty, a few years later, the legislature passed a law, she campaigned on Ohana zoning, which is an accessory dwelling on a unit, on a lot in 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 the state where there is infrastructure and the city deems it adequate, the infrastructure is adequate to permit it. I'm told that just over however many thirty, forty years, it's only been a few thousand maybe permits because they haven't been doing it. So this this strategy forces the counties to, now what could force them to also put pressure to increase the capacity? Because you already have, let's say if you have sewer but not water, then it'll put pressure on water to, you know, you'll pay a water fee and then you'll you'll improve water capacity. But after all that said, one thing that is not limited is parking. Because parking, I mean, how do you know how, I don't think there's a criteria for that. You know, and that's where you have, you know, so if you have water and sewer and you have accessory units, it's the parking that will cause a lot of problems. And so there is, there's a, my concern is that multiple unintended consequences in that. And to answer your question is, we need to identify the specifics of what could happen and then monitor it. Have people who understand the law, understand where to monitor, we should track. So the county has, there's, so the law, the bill has two things. One is it says the county has to pass an ordinance in, I think, two years in order to implement this law. You know, the way they they can do it, however way they want to do it. If they don't, then the state law kicks in and we, and gives landowner the right. You know, so if there's capacity, I think they could sue, you know. So it's a heavy hand, I would say, over the counties. And so so the answer to your question, we need to study it, monitor it, become experts in it and track it. And then at every possible point, say what what the concerns are.
Thank you, Senator. It's obvious a lot of work on this. It's going to be coming up in the future. You got your plate full with this. Are there any other questions, Senator, online?
Yeah, me. Sorry, I'll be really fast. It's not going to make housing more affordable. Investors are going to swoop in and buy up all the lots. They're going to subdivide them, chop them all up and put as many dwellings, I mean, lots is the 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 size of a lot can be twelve hundred square feet. That's smaller than my house. I mean, I live on a substandard lot on on St. Louis. This is going to make it crazy out there. And if you think monster homes are bad, this, these are monster lots. And it's going to just, they're going to skyrocket in value.
Yeah, that that is probably the one of the most important points you made. Because the advocates are saying, well, if it's your lot and you have to live in it, then you're going to diminish your own lifestyle. And if you want to do that, then me, my guess. You know, because there's no harm. You're not harming your neighbors. You're harming yourself. But if you have investors buy out lots after lots, that's when you get into trouble. Because then you're going to have lots of monster homes. So so we need to, so that's why the county, so the next step would be to have the county pass an ordinance that is to the the community satisfaction, to eliminate those unintended costs, eliminate those things that could go wrong. So the county could, you know, I would wish them well to to art, to pass an ordinance that that addresses as many of the concerns as possible.
Thank you, Senator. Bruce?
That would, that would help resolve that. I've been talking about this proposition thirteen that they have in California where the property taxes are fixed on what you paid for your property. And so it cannot go up more than one to two percent a year. And so everything is based on what we pay for our property. If this is our primary residence, then there's no way the city can charge us more than one to two percent a year increase in our property taxes. And basically, as property owners, that will make us more resistant to development, especially when in our neighborhoods, lots get chopped up into two, three, four different lots. And then their property taxes will go up, but mine won't because I'm a primary resident owner. And so if if the city can pass something like they have in California where primary residents, whoever wants to have their families live here, my grandchildren live upstairs. I want someday for them to take over the property. I don't want them to move to Vegas or California or Michigan or wherever. I want them to become part of Hawaii. And so as primary residents, we should have some protection against excess development in our neighborhoods. Does that make sense to you, Mr. Yehara?
Yeah, it makes sense. But that's a different matter.
I don't know why it cannot be looked at and cannot be examined.
I'll give an example of condos, condo condos having, there's been a no, no, no tax increase, no maintenance fee increase, you know, many condos take that position and and those who get on the board take that stance. As it's turning out, the condo boards have not been maintaining their their own community, have not been maintaining their, whatever, the common area. And 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 so the unfunded, well, the the maintenance required, the, you know, there is a state law that requires a certain reserve fund to take care of 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 buildings that are, you know, that are condos that are falling apart, that are spalding and whatnot. And there's an insurance crisis now where condos, many, most condos cannot get mortgage insurance. You can, you can sell to a cash buyer, but you can't sell. Banks will not give you mortgages unless you buy off the off the market. And so that is, so there is, so that is one of the downsides of of not paying maintenance fees or what it takes to maintain. So I don't know the, I, it's a county issue. And I should say that Honolulu is probably the one of the lowest property tax rates in the in the nation. And the reason is that there are no municipal courts, there are no municipal libraries, there's no, usually the counties run the schools and municipal hospitals. And so the county has very little public highways, streets, you know, those, you know, those kinds of things. But so we have a very unique situation in Hawaii. And and I haven't thought it through of how to apply the proposition thirteen to Hawaii situation since we're we're so different. But that, but it's a good, you know, I like the thinking and 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 that's maybe another thing to learn more about.
Yeah, but but shouldn't, shouldn't somebody examine how many property owners are kapuna-type owners that own their property and want to pass it on to their children and their grandchildren? As opposed to, as opposed to investors coming into Hawaii? And so as we keep losing residents to the mainland and other investors come in and take over the properties, they're not going to have a chance to get the kapuna housing because there'll be new buyers.
Right. So you cannot deal with investors in this, we're part of the United States and the Commerce Clause. And so, you know, we're going to have to deal with investors another way. But the city is responsible. So so Maui County, I think there's a, they have what do you call circuit breaker? Where, you know, you have a certain income and at a certain level, then you then you do not, you not, you know, others may go up. But but your taxes will not go up because it's a, you know, you hit the, you hit an amount. So if they call it a circuit breaker, Margaret probably knows, I think Maui County and other counties. So that's one thing you might consider is to add a circuit breaker kind of in the ordinance to say at a certain maybe certain criteria, if you lived there for so long or income, whatever criteria. And then then you are exempt for any additional tax increases. That might be something worth worth looking at. That's a county issue, not a state issue.
Yeah, but the way it's set up now where your property gets assessed and they give you, they give you a tax break, but then the new taxes is based on the new assessment, which is much higher than the old assessment.
Yeah, you might want to talk to the county.
Robin Peter to pay Paul all over again. It's just.
It's not in my conversation because it's a pure county issue. So if I would suggest that you talk with a county because they would be more knowledgeable. I'm not, you know, I'm more knowledgeable state issues. This is a purely county issue. And county real property taxes in the constitution is belonging to the counties exclusively.
Thank you, Senator. Yeah, it's a, it had a busy session. So overall, you gave the legislature an A grade this year. You said it was a little fewer shenanigans than normal.
I would give it an A for now, first Monday morning quarterbacking. There are probably, there have been mistakes we, you know, have made, some bills, you know, like, well, I, my opinion is thirty two oh two was a mistake. But there are other bills, you know, in fact, I have one that was a mistake. Now you, and I, and I will own that I should have voted with reservations. But what it does is weed whackers, weed whackers in 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 residential zone areas are prohibited now, Monday through Saturday, seven AM to nine PM. No, from nine AM to seven PM. So my street landscaper who comes on Saturdays will not be able to do his weed whacking. So some people like it and some people don't. So anyway, that, that I should have, at least I'd have reservations. And I'm not sure, I, I, you know, I, I might have wanted to spend more time on that one.
Hey, well, there's always next year. And yeah, noise is always a perennial issue, but we thank you for your service and dedication. And, uh, yeah, noise is a, always a perennial issue, but we thank you for your service and dedication to the community and keep looking out for those shenanigans that happen. Thank you, sir. And next we have Representative Kobayashi. I don't know if Representative Kobayashi is here tonight or not, um.
Amanda has her hand up on the taxing.
Amanda, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to mention, we, we've talked about this before, but we do have sort of a circuit breaker for Honolulu County. We do have a low income cap of no more than three percent of your income if you make eighty thousand dollars or less. So it's not for everyone, but we do have a cap for, for our low income taxpayers. Just wanted to add that note to the conversation.
Thank you, Amanda. Maybe if you could put a link to that in the chat if you haven't already, um, that would be great. Or, or ways for folks to contact you on that. And is Mr. Kobayashi, are you here tonight? Um, seeing that he's not, Mr. Sayama, are you here tonight? Someone from his office? Uh, and anyone from Senator Stanley Chang's office? Okay, let's move on to our Honolulu City Council. I can't believe it, it's not even eight o'clock, we're, we're racing through this. Any, Amanda, okay, you're next, Tommy Waters' office, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, came up so quick. Thank you. Um, okay, just Amanda Zapata here for Council Chair Waters. He is, um, in California for the NACO conference. Um, just wanted to, uh, reiterate a few things I put in the chat earlier, uh, following the conversation. Um, Board Member Hasina had mentioned about the payphones in the park. Um, we do have over a hundred payphones in our city parks and DPR is currently working with the owner of the payphones to have them all removed. So they're anticipating about nine to twelve months, uh, to remove all the payphones in our city parks. And then, um, Director Crucki had mentioned about Department of Planning and Permitting's update to the city council on its permit backlog. And I, um, put the link in the chat to that. Some good information there. And then Board Member Khan had a comment about illegal dumping. And I put the link in the chat where to report illegal dumping. Um, and then I mentioned about the property tax issue. Um, additionally, I have a couple of things to report on. Um, also put our contact information in the chat as well as the link to our news letter. Um, but I wanted to mention Chair Waters, one bill he recently introduced last week is Bill twenty-seven. This is in relation to some ongoing issues, uh, that we've been following and working with related to the Hypiscus Drive fire of twenty twenty. Um, so basically, you know, there, if you've sort of been following this issue or, or familiar, there's been permitting delays despite Chair's resolution to expedite those permits for reconstruction. And some of the, and there's various reasons for the, for the permitting delay. Some of it's, you know, been on the DPP backlog part of it. And some of it's been with the applicants, um, for various reasons. But in some of the cases, we've seen where these folks were living in their homes and they had a home exemption. They lost their home exemption due to the time that it's taken to reconstruct. Um, there is a cap in the law that says that you have two years to, uh, reoccupy the home before you lose your home exemption. So because there's no home on the property and, and, and it hasn't been for those two years, they lost the exemption. And in some cases, as we know with the property values, they're over a million dollars, which bumps them into the residential A category. So just to, you know, add salt to the wound, they've lost their home due to a fire. Now they've lost their home exemption and now they're paying, you know, so much more in property taxes under the reclassification of residential A. So, um, Chair Waters has introduced a bill to basically extend the amount of time that the homeowner has to reoccupy the home from two years to four years, uh, while still retaining the home exemption. Um, regrettably, this is not a retroactive bill, so it won't help those folks who did lose their home exemption, uh, the Hypiscus Fire folks. But we are working to prevent this from happening again for future homeowners in the event of a loss of home due to fire damage. Um, so that's something that we're gonna be discussing at the council. I know we've had a lot of discussion about the Senate Bill three two oh two. You know, obviously, we are still deeply concerned about that. Um, I think you folks know that Chair Waters and Vice Chair Kia Ina sent a letter to the legislature and, um, I know our policy team is already looking at ways that we can address some of the things. Part of the problem is that the bill is very confusing. Uh, I read it multiple times and I'm, I have so many questions. I'm not an attorney, but I work with dozens of attorneys who feel the same way. It's a poorly written bill, it leaves, you know, a lot of unanswered questions. We do have a little bit of a safeguard with respect to the, um, infrastructure capacity, but it's specific to utility infrastructure. Um, so when we're talking about, you know, uh, fire and, and police, emergency services type infrastructure, that unfortunately is not covered or included. So we are concerned about that. Um, and actually, just to note, we just recently, a few weeks ago, uh, received some information from Department of Permit, Planning and Permitting that they have already denied building permits in the Kaemaki area for lack of sewer infrastructure. So this is something that we are absolutely concerned about. Um, and, and our office is working, uh, very hard to, to come up with some interesting and possibly weird ways, uh, to address, uh, you know, the unintended consequences of this bill. Um, moving on, I wanted to just announce that we have a special budget meeting coming up on the CD two Monday, uh, May thirteenth. So please, uh, stay tuned into that if you're interested in the budget discussions. Um, we sent out an update, uh, on Chair Waters Resolution twenty-four thirty, requesting an update from the administration on the low flow shower fixtures at city parks, including Kaimana, which has been a, a point of concern. Um, and then I know Chair Welch, you had asked District Five for an update on the burned down house in Date Street. Since the redistricting, that area is now within Council District Four. So I did submit an, uh, a request for an update to DPP. From what I can tell, just looking at DPP records, the outstanding notice of violation that was issued to the property owner in twenty twenty for fire damage is still outstanding and, and has not been, uh, corrected. So I'm looking for some information as to what is the follow-up on enforcement? Have we escalated the notice of violation to a notice of order? Have there been civil fines assessed? And if so, how much? What else are we doing to, um, further enforcement? There are certain things the city has the authority to do, like they can put a lien on the home or they can put a stopper on your driver's license or registration, um, certain things like that, that in some, you know, instances may help encourage folks to come into compliance. Um, but I'll report back more on that when I have more information. Um, I think that's all I have. Take back any questions if you have them.
Boy, if I had five of you, Amanda, I could take over the world. Questions for Amanda in here, Arlene?
Hi, Amanda, it's Arlene. Um, I'm, have a question regarding actually Sharks Cove and the developer not willing to sell to the city. Um, has the city actually made an offer on that property? And I just want to make everyone, the community aware that the developer has plans to build a thirty-five thousand square foot strip mall right across from a very sensitive marine environment, which is Sharks Cove. And, um, as far as we know, when the city passed the, um, the permit for this, they didn't require an environmental impact study.
You got me there, Arlene. I'm sorry, I don't know enough about this issue to answer you, but I'm happy to look into it and get back to you. Um, if nobody else has any information to offer tonight, I'm happy to follow up on that for you.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Others online question for that's Member Waters' office. Uh, you know, I, I just was a reminder for folks that, you know, thirty-two oh two came about and we have that to contend with, but I'm sort of heartened to hear this, that the city is denying permits for water in Kaemaki. Because if our sewers, you know, haven't updated in fifty years, obviously, we probably have some capacity issues here. But it seems like then we're put in a quagmire, maybe we just don't update our, our infrastructure and that keeps out development. But remember that the, the DPP has also proposed that we're densifying this area all the way back on Kapahuulu, all the way up to Seventh, all the way basically on Wailea to the freeway. We're talking those five-story structures. So if those, if, if what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And I think if we can apply those same ideas to this, you know, forced densification of our neighborhood, which we have serious concerns about in thirty-two oh two, it, it also may work with the primary urban war plan as well. Uh, but for those of you who are interested on this board, uh, Esther Kia Ina said that she was interested. Um, I did testify on behalf of the board and let them know that we had passed a resolution about the primary urban core on this board. She said she's willing to come out and understand the topography of our neighborhood so that when you're looking at putting in a five-story structure next to a one-story structure that currently exists, that that's a, a major impact on the neighborhood. She said she would come out and I think that there's probably some sunshine laws that, that she could bring a couple of other council members. But, uh, since we have Councilmember Say and Councilmember Waters here, they're already aware of the feelings of the neighborhood. So, um, that's good. And then let's not forget the two oh one Hs, that hasn't gone anywhere. And that's just put anything anywhere, um, with, yeah, my, basically that's it. I mean, there's literally, yeah, core, yeah, exactly. So with that, yeah, Amanda, thank you so much for always, you know, your diligent work for Councilmember Waters' office and the rest of your on the staff there as well.
Thank you so much, thank you.
And, uh, I see we have, uh, Councilmember Say here, who has been patiently waiting, uh, for a chance to address our, our neighborhood board and neighborhoods. So thank you very much, Councilmember.
Thank you very much, Senator. I'll just be very brief. I believe Amanda did a great job in explaining to the residents and the board members the topic and issues that we are trying to address. I, I have to say for the record, for Bruce, we are working on something as far as trying to address real property tax. It may be the Maui's concept of trigger mechanism would be what the past House of Did in regards to creating another threshold in regard to a classification which is residential. We had some measured it was residential, which is a threshold, meaning anything over one point two million, you had a higher property tax rate. So all of this, we are trying to address. But I have to say this for all of you. It's easy to say that we're gonna not increase the assessment of rates, that's good. But at the end of the day, I am obligated to balance the budget of the county. And I truly believe that all of these individuals have come before us earlier than the hearing or the meeting from our Hong Kong Police Department to our Fire Department to our officials that are here from the Neighborhood Commission, every first responder, it's a responsibility of the city and county. And it is a major issue trying to address it. This year, I'm very much concerned for all of you to be aware, is that we had to find eighty million dollars plus. Would the board members know what particular debt money is going to be used for? Arlene, Enda, Julia, Houston? That money that we had to cut the budget up with this funding for our hazardous aid during COVID. The general public has to understand, money doesn't just come out of the air. Eighteen million. And at the end of the day, it's gonna be by Mayor Blandiardi along with Acting Director Fonby, it's still in the court age with the whole, HPTA, UPW, all public authorities. So that's apparent, that this coming Monday, the council will be addressing. Any draft on? In closing, I was shocked this past year, three first day, that none of the seven neighborhood boards that I attended talked about two oh one H, where Calvin Seale was criticized for pulling a fast one. And that's not true. It's a state law that gives us forty-five days. Last year, we had pushed to extend it from forty-five to ninety days. My colleagues, who I respect from the state legislature, did not address it. The law is on the book, state law, known as Hawaii revised. Yes, there were four or five families that were denied their approval of the accessory dwelling, dwelling units, arguably. Maybe it's the main capacity of the room. But for our residents of same sites within a limited job and placing some of our stores past years. And that's the topic of the study that we need, because everybody wants things done. You may not have the resources to do it all. So in closing, yes, uh, Senate Bill thirty-two oh two. I always felt this, and I might be, as a former state legislator and now council member, maybe the best action is no action. And then we're breaking the state law, the state entity. You come up with the resources for the infrastructure. You come up with the resources and try to address off on-street parking, where we passed a measure this year, last year, in regards to reserve parking zones, which I, I voted no, because it's privatizing public property. That's how much we are discussing issues today. And I'm very privileged and fortunate to be a part of that special. So in closing, I just wanted to share that with all of you. And finally, the other one that I thought we could talk about, I think, Day Street, I'll tell them right now. I'm addressing that with, uh, fourteen twenty-one principle twice, and this is gonna be the eighth. This particular issue on the agenda. But Corporation Council is going through that process. So in essence, what I'm saying, if we had the legislature in support of a non-judicial foreclosure of these particular homes that are ISO, it's a public health and safety day, we should be given the opportunity to go in non-judicial foreclosure. I think Ian knows about it. So two oh one H, the state, non-judicial foreclosure state, we've been asking for because you folks have been telling us, what are you guys doing about Day Street? What are you guys doing about this? That's the topic that I wanted to share with all of you. I'm sorry, I've gone forward with my time.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Say. Yes, and thanks for the reminder that this two oh one H issues are very complex and it's not easy to always understand, um, the process, but that you, we are mandated by the state to, uh, uh, to, to address this in forty-five days. And that's something that needs to come up with the state. There's the city version too. But, uh, for people that are interested in, they really need to start taking a deep dive. It would be great, actually, if we could have a, a primer, maybe under the auspices of your office, about these various, um, bills and how, how the public might weigh in. But, um, I'll leave that to you. And I think for questions for the council member, Mr. Ross?
Thank you, yes, this is, um, the issue of the non-judicial foreclosure has, of course, come up in some discussions I've had with the council members before. Uh, Makiki's very familiar with this problem of abandoned homes. I've noticed there appears to be, I, I hope I'm not mistaken, so I don't want to give the exact address, but there is a home on Olokele that appears to be long abandoned, has a lot of overgrown grass. It looks a lot like a fire hazard. Um, you know, one thing I've still haven't been clear on the non-judicial foreclosure You know, one thing I've still haven't been clear on the non-judicial foreclosure is I know we have a foreclosure process for this. Councilmember, can you just articulate a little bit more clearly why the current system falls short? And what sort of nuisance abatement or risks have to be presented under the current system versus what kind of changes you'd like to see to the law? Thank you.
A non-judicial foreclosure is a much more faster pace of getting things done. If you want to go through the democratic process, which is the judicial process, we go through step by step. And we've got to go and find owner, circle paper, saying that you are in notice of violation. Now we are going to start assessment from fines that is still. But if you don't find the part of the land, what do you do? Let it sit there. And that's where it was just, it's one part of the overall process. All I'm saying, with the principal, and Mr. Ross would agree, for me, it's been this past four years, maybe in the how much longer residents. You sound like saying that Calvin Seale is not doing anything. And that's not right. That's not true. Because Mr. Ross knows that we've been talking about it a great, for me. So that's part of it. And that's how we have to try to address. It was more trying to protect the land and going through the judicial process that particular landmark. It's the, what we heard, what we really investigated, is that the person that owns it, not being fined. So for the first place, so all that, there's so many different parts to it.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I think Daisy Moray may have a question for you. Go ahead, Daisy.
Thank you. Hi, Calvin. Remember last month, last week, at the Makali Moili Board regarding the Alaway Bridge? Did you mention that it is now designed and built? So in other words, we're bypassing planning. So in other words, you seem to be thinking, or the city seems to be thinking that, okay, we got our design, let's go ahead and build it. And then you mentioned that the public can participate, but at this point, it doesn't seem like it's possible. So can you explain?
I'm going on the statements that were made by Director Roger Morton at Town Hall Meeting. That present in the past, it was design, construction plans, et cetera. Listen, is a design build, developer will have the opportunity of meeting those who are interested. At that point, there is that discussion. So that's where I think Director Morton stated for the record that it is a design build.
And Councilmember, can I follow up on that one? From what I, I think I see in the coming out of DTS or maybe the council is that the bridge design that was originally presented to us many years ago was a low-rise design. And it was also emergency vehicles at that time. That's since morphed. And then we had the very tall design, which our board and others have been, you know, in opposition to. But I think the current contract says that a low bridge design is, that, that, that bidders should submit for the design that they want to, which is not necessarily the high, high bridge. Is that correct?
I did state in the budget that it's for a revisal. Whoever is a developer should consider it. A lower height of the.
Including like a flat bridge, like you might find at Makali or.
I really don't think it's a flat or is it circular? I really, all I'm saying is that, can you lower what's presented to us, the concept for you?
Thank you. And Margaret, Daisy, you have a follow up on that?
Yeah, I just think that how can you, you know, if we need money so badly, how can we justify an unnecessary multimillion dollar pedestrian bridge that's going to cost, they've already gotten $25 million from the feds that they've been spending. And how, and then the taxpayers last, we were told it was over $60 million that would be our cost, you know, to pay. And it's, you know, you can't, you're, guys are talking out of both sides of your mouth. You know, you need money and we have to hire all these people, but then we've got this bridge that nobody wants. There's got to be something, you know, there's, I don't know why they're, you know, they've got this elaborate, you know, bridge. And they've had it in design and it's Roger Morton and Complete Streets. And it's the same thing, you know, it's like, no. Not, that's not acceptable.
Well, thank you very much, Margaret.
And I also think the residential A, you should give people that own, that have homeowners exemptions. It's too low at a million two or a million dollars or whatever it is. And I mean, the median sales price of a home in Honolulu is over a million bucks. It's a million dollars. And somebody that rents a second home, if they have a second home from grandma or whatever, and they want to pay for her assisted living, you should let them rent it long-term to a local or whomever and give them a break. Start rewarding people instead of always punishing people with taxes. I mean, you don't put up an awful lot of housing that way. Most of them can't afford to pay the capital gains on the house until grandma dies. And there's just all sorts of other things you guys could think of. And the residential A and the residential A, whatever the second one was, that Caldwell came up with, it's just not right.
All right. At least we're looking at another revenue source, which is the vacant home tax.
Well, something's going to be done. Yes, we're just, that's why the taxpayers are all leaving. You're going to be stuck with a bunch of homeless people and rich developers.
And Councilmember?
Sorry, because points are well taken. And I agree that, yeah, I don't want to seem like this, even want to go back to the old days, but we can't go back to the old days. All of our neighborhoods are family. And today, District Five, we have a lot of residents in return for why there is that, what the community was. So I can understand. Thank you.
And one more question, I think. Daisy, you had a follow up or is that just in order?
Yes, no, I have a follow up. Can you clarify, the bridge is to be built at the Alaway Park between the park and Alaway School and crossing to Waikiki. And the bulk of the tower will be on Moili side, which if you look at that soil, is it really able to support this heavy beam? And you're going to allow it to only 16 stories? That's not a real pedestrian bicycle lane. It should just be a flat one. Because the other bridges cost only five million a few years ago or 10 years ago. Why is it all of a sudden inflated to eighty something thousand million? Doesn't make sense. So and you said the building portion is to be not the community, but between the city and the developer. You mentioned that the community will have a chance to say something during the design and build segment. But now is a different story. It's going to be nothing that the community has a voice in anymore. You know, you have to make it very clear.
You will be having, you will be having an opportunity to voice your concern when this particular project continues on. It was stated for the record at the Manoa Naval, they found a meeting by. And for those who are there, Mr. Morton stated for the record, and I believe in him that he's going to follow through with it. As far as the engineering studies and all of this, I can't speak for that. I'm not a professional in that particular.
Thank you. But you need to start that area. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is, as I remember it, one of the most contested years with the public's outcry, a lot of different things. It used to be you guys used to come back, tell us what passed, what didn't pass, and then it teaches something. There was enough time to do that. But now everything sounds like an outcry from the public, you know, from the pay raises to the building. And it seems like it's kicking up anymore coming with the elections coming. It's just, everybody seems to be more aware of what's happening and not happening with it. So, you know, I, I wish we could either stay in the middle or just not go up in citizens' complaints because they're rampant.
So your, your point is very much well taken. I think a lot of the issues today is because of what transpired, you know, pre-COVID, now post-COVID. And it really affected the life of a lot of people, you know, go off in the state. So that's why I said earlier, if I had my druthers, I want to go back to the old days, I enjoyed for you.
Exacerbated things, it really did. But this is the most outcry I've heard from these citizens since I can, I can remember. So, and it doesn't do as much good as it used to. We used to work on a problem, somebody brought it up and write it.
Yes, you're correct. You folks have been very successful in regards to the return of Leahy Street back to the residents. You know, you know, those are the issues that we are trying for the same size residents, same thing. You know, preserving kind of park, seeing that the roads are fixed, signs are erected.
I believe the, I'm sorry for interrupting, but I believe that the residents of Leahy Avenue actually did that themselves. That, you know, we had a lot of public outcry, a lot of, well, we raised the money to prove that Leahy Avenue was never a part of the city, was never a part of the trust, they said. And that some other things that are very disturbing to find out what went on that really happened to have that happen. Because Tommy asked Michelle and I before he ever started it, we said no. And there it went anyway, you know, you brought it up and, you know, it's just, it's not as good as it used to be. And I don't think it's because of COVID. I know COVID gave everybody a, a negative mindset and it was actual abuse to, you know, the world because it was so horrific. But, you know, we have to come out of that at some point.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can't hold it as an excuse forever.
Right. I agree with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember. Yes, and stay safe this weekend. Storms. I see Jackson Sayama in the House. Jackson, you want to give us an update?
Thank you, Chair, and all the members of the board. Apologies for the delay. Yes, I, I think it's been mentioned, but, but of course, the legislative session has come to a close. We have submitted several hundred pieces of legislation to the governor for his signature or veto. So we will be awaiting that in the months come. Some of the highlights that I wanted to note for this year's legislative session, it was very productive. We had covered many, many controversial issues. But real highlight was the monies appropriated to the Maui victims and the redevelopment from Maui. We appropriated about $1 billion to support Maui's residents from the Maui wildfire. Approximately 362 million to address the costs related to food, housing and compensation for those displaced. And another 447 million for those, again, with the logistics, helping Maui with the logistics, the wildfire relief and management. On the budget, we also provided significant funding for, to combat the invasive species that we continue to see affect our native population and our economy. This includes, of course, a coconut rhinocerospedo, while not a significant threat right now to my district and District 21. It does pose a significant economic and environmental risk to those on North Shore, East Side and now West Side. So we total appropriated about 19.7 million for additional staffing to expand their capacity to inspect and be proactive in their approach to stopping these invasive species enter into our native communities. We also provided a significant tax relief through increasing the standard deduction and adjusting of the individual income tax brackets. So this is estimated to provide a $5 billion tax relief over six years. Again, it's, I think, going to go a long ways to helping a lot of the Alice families, asset limited income constrained employed families struggling to make ends meet in Hawaii, which ironically I fall into as well. Next, we also have tax relief through an exemption for general excise tax for medical services and products. So again, just trying to make sure that we're reducing the cost of living as much as possible, especially for essential things like medical services. We provided a significant amount of funding to local schools in the district, over 3 million for District 21. So we're very happy about that. A lot of that is going towards projects that will help improve safety in our schools. Fire alarms, leveling out the ground so kids can play in the playground. So those are really big highlights for this year's legislative session. Of course, there are many, many more SB 3202, as you mentioned earlier, passed, unfortunately. I do want to note that I did vote no on that, given the number of issues and concerns we've had with the application of the bill. But now that it has passed, it is on the governor's, I, I believe, in the governor's hands as well as the counties as to how to apply that law. So we'll see if we could come back next year to do something about that. With that, you know, I know I'm over my time, so I'll end it there and I'm open for questions.
Thank you, Jackson. And is there anyone in the audience with a question for Jackson or online?
I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Thank you. Thank you very much, Representative Sayama. I see Kelly is, has a question for you.
Sure.
Yes, thank you, Representative Sayama. I think, thank you for voting no on SB 3202. Is there a chance that the governor could veto the bill?
Could, though, it was my impression that his administration was supportive of the measure. So I, I, again, it's in his hands, but I would encourage people to voice their concerns about the measure.
Are you saying right to the governor? Is that what you're saying, Jackson?
Yeah, not to put too much on his plate already, but, you know, I, I think it's, right, it's part of the democratic process and your right to voice your concerns to the governor who could veto this bill.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your work this session as well and for coming tonight. And I did see Stanley King. I saw someone from his office, but I'm not sure if that person's still here or not. That maybe been. Okay, well, with that then, thank you very much, Representative. And let's move on to board business. And we did not have any committees that I think, St. Louis Heights Subdistrict Allen.
The next St. Louis Heights Community Association meeting will be Monday, July 8th at 7:00 PM at Hokelani Elementary School.
Can you repeat that? What, what time and date?
Monday, July 8th, 7:00 PM at Hokelani Elementary School.
Okay, thank you. And we have a vacancy for Subdistrict 2, so maybe Dan or Alex, you want to jump on that and become our Subdistrict 2? And if you like, we can talk about that later. And Subdistrict 3, Linda Wong?
I spoke with the head engineer for all the cities, the city entities, Arlene and I did, and about Kaimana Beach, and he's going to address it. He's aware of it. And we'll be speaking with him. Both engineers, as someone was saying, and also about Dillingham Fountain. I, I had the city guy in wastewater, stormwater, fix the Dillingham Fountain. And he did everything that they were saying they need to do about the Waikiki Fountain. He put in a new infrastructure, a new, he had to fix it. There were quite many things wrong with it. Over a quarter of a million dollars, something for one of them. And it's fixed. So, you know, it should be able to be done, something about the other fountain, if people want it. And then, so what they've been doing is just having some times when it doesn't run. And then, so what they've been doing is just having some times when it doesn't run. So this, according to their schedule and what they need to do, but the fountain is fixed. So, you know, it's possible.
It's possible. Thank you. Yeah, the the cost on that was insane. It was what, was it a million? It was at least four hundred and forty thousand, if my memory is serving correctly. And I'm thinking, where do they buy their pumps? Are they made out of gold? I mean, it's, it's a pump. Even then, I, yeah, I, no, anyway, thank you for that, Linda. Board report members, meetings at other public meetings or other boards? Yes, sir.
You skipped over the board member three absence letter.
I'm sorry, what did I skip over?
The X A.
The board member, yes, I'm sorry, the board member three absence letter that I'm sorry, that was my mistake. I left that off from the last meeting. So there's, there isn't, I don't think there's anything here tonight that would be applicable in that. But I I I meet, a a letter did go out to one of the board members, but I think then he's been notified that that's, that that happened. So.
Can I discuss that? I would like to know what it is, what, you know.
This, I think that neighborhood, that neighborhood commission office has just been watching a little bit closer. So when there's three absences, they've been sending out letters and just keeping a little bit closer tabs on that. Then I think we used to
Three absences is the amount we're not supposed to make.
Correct.
Then there should be a board vote.
And then it goes out and then there's supposed to be a discussion on that. And there could be a a board vote, but since it's not specifically on the agenda tonight, and it was on last month's agenda. It's on, it's on here, but it was for a specific board member last month. So I don't know if we can discuss that actually this month.
You can't.
So I think it's just like a word to all of us that, you know, if you agree to be on the board, you should come to the meetings.
Same rule.
Same rule.
Always had.
Same rule, yeah. But they, but the neighborhood commission office seems to be looking a little bit more carefully at who's coming and who's not.
We've always done it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Secretary Boyd, for bringing that up. Are there any board members attending other board and public meetings? Yes, ma'am.
This is Arlene. I've been attending several of the mayor's town hall meetings. I went to the Wainai, the Manoa, of course, that's ours, and the Salt Lake. And one thing that I was kind of one common problem that we're all having is homelessness and the problems with not just the homeless who are sleeping in the bushes, but the ones in particular that pose danger, the ones that are on ice and the other drugs that that make them out of their minds. And that's a real public health issue. I I actually felt threatened the other day walking in my work neighborhood with a man walking and tweaking and had a pro bar in his hand. And I crossed the street and it was the middle of the day. So those are the kind of issues I see that everyone in these town hall meetings is bringing up. Also, there was a lot of discussion in all these town halls about the development and how everyone is very unhappy about these high rise buildings just going in their development without the neighbors, without the community really knowing that it's happening until it's brought up to the vote of the city council. And then the city council, because of the state, has only forty-five days. And what we've all noticed is that when they, when the these developers know that if they submit their plans in December, that there's a Christmas break and that people are distracted with all the holidays. And then that gives them, that gives us, we come back from Christmas holidays, most of us have family outside. And it gives us a week and a half to fight these developments. And it's, it's a real problem. And it's, people are recognizing it all over the island. So it's, it was very interesting to these town hall meetings. I plan to go to the North County one as well.
Thank you, Arlene. And are there any others who attended another meeting? And they've been watching them on TV. It's, it's a good thing to do. They are on O'Lealoe and posted on the, on the mayor's website. And I did go to the Manoa one. It was a couple of weeks ago, maybe. Yeah, and the issues of people in our neighborhood talking about some serious things on Campbell Avenue and issues with people doing things they shouldn't be doing. So I think the message out of that that I got was, this is above your pay grade. Call nine one one if you're feeling threatened or you see something that's going on. That's like, that is not right. You know, you don't have the capacity to intervene yourself without potentially causing some harm. So people were rightly concerned about many issues. And I think the mayor was, you know, saying that they're trying to address this as fast as they can. There's a lawsuit right now inside of the Supreme Court, which was Grant's Pass versus, now I guess the US or somebody, about how cities can work with the homeless or cannot. And then he also talked about the fire hazards and that spent a lot of time on that as well. So with that, there are no other meetings there, members of board members attending other board and public meetings, chairs report, committee agendas and general announcements. I would love to have a parks committee meeting this, this month before our next meeting. Otherwise, we have a neighborhood board five next meeting at six PM Thursday, June thirteenth. And I cannot believe we have finished before nine o'clock. This is like a first in probably a decade. I can't remember another time. So although it doesn't always come like this, we need more time, even sometimes we just need a little extra fifteen minutes. Of course, nobody wants a four hour meeting, but sometimes our topics are really important. But with that, remember, there's folks that want to work on a group to have the combined boards that will look at Bert Kobayashi's, you know, candidate replacements and have a candidate forum for that or for Scott Nishimoto's seat as well. Please feel free to reach out to me. And that is something we can organize with those other neighborhood boards so that you can get to better know the candidates that are coming up to fill those seats. So with that, I want to thank our, our gentleman from O'Lealoe, who is here diligently filming and so many different that you do, and our neighborhood assistant tonight was Spencer Johnson in for Dylan, and we appreciate you very much and the work that you do. So thank you, everybody. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Aloha.